But it seems like this time of year, the more shows you're there, it's completely gone.
And that's how whatever name is and wherever it's called fifty-four, no human
It's getting better.
Oh, yeah. We're getting ahead of it. This is one of the times where we should.
It's business time.
I mean, you can keep them both busy. You know, we spent somebody's time.
Call the regular council meeting to order at City Hall November twentieth, twenty eighteen at seven P. M. Any additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, I want to add under new business, just discussion about employees.
Okay.
Bill, do we need to add that?
Just doing that over City.
Citizen comments.
Any other additions to the agenda? I need two five-minute executive sessions to discuss personnel matters and non-elected personnel relating to a possible hire for the police department, part-time, and review Motion on table?
Second.
Motion in a second for discussion of employees under new business and two five-minute executive sessions to discuss non-elected personnel under the police department. Any other discussion?
Bye-bye.
All in favor? All opposed carries five oh. Citizens comments?
Okay, guys, I got, I want to address the dog breed ban ordinance. I would like to make suggestions on possibly changing that to a vicious animal instead of a dog breed ordinance. I've done some research on other cities of our size, other cities that have done dog breed ban, that have done away with it, just possibilities of that. So I've got, like, city of Stafford, they went away with it, did strictly the vicious dog breed. Vicious dog ordinance, which is the same thing we have already in effect, we have just enforced that instead of the breed ban. And then there's other towns that have, you must register the dog if it's a pit bull or a rottweiler, whatever. Some have background checks, some have them where they're chipped and sterilized, others say that can't be a felon and own these breeds of dogs. Just some different suggestions on something different than the dog breed ban.
Hey, Jim.
I know a lot of cities are going away from that.
In your professional opinion, what do you think?
Personally, what I'd like to see us do is do away with the, just go with the vicious animal rule, and if we have an incident, we aggressively enforce the vicious animal. I visited this afternoon with the city judge. She's had no issues with the situation over at Stafford, they do it that way. And if there is a vicious animal situation that comes up, the people are given, she typically gives them fifteen days to remove it. I would add, what I'd probably do is add a policy that if the dog attacks somebody and came under a vicious or vicious animal during that fifteen-day period, rather than euthanize it, it would be housed at the shelter at the owner's expense, and then they would have to show us proof that it was removed from the city.
That's already in here in section, on that two fifteen vicious animal ordinance, it's section F of that ordinance where we impound it if we have an attack.
Do you have any thoughts?
Stafford's is exactly like ours. I mean, it's word for word.
But it's vicious.
Vicious.
Rather than a breed ban.
Yes.
Right.
And this is what Tony talked to me probably about two or three months ago.
And there again, guys, I mean, prior to being law enforcement, I was in EMS for fifteen years, and I'm gonna say probably during that fifteen years, I probably responded to a hundred dog bites. Yes, there were a couple that were pit bulls or the bigger breed. Ninety-nine percent of them were ankle biter type dogs, bites, you know? They don't get depressed as the pit bulls, as the rottweilers do just because of, you know, the grip strength on the dogs and stuff like that. Yes, you know, you're probably gonna see influx in bigger dogs in this town. Dopers like to use it, but in the fifteen-year, almost fifteen years of law enforcement, we really did not have that problem once the city writing firm lim, or did away with the ban on it. You know, they just actively enforced the vicious animal rule, and we really had no issues with it.
John, your thoughts though?
Since, I don't know, like, four or fifth year, we've only had one vicious dog case, and it just happened to be a pit bull. But the couple that harbored that pit bull have also been in and out of jail in Pratt County for drug-related cases. But we've not really, we have more running at large than anything.
Jim, your professional opinion?
Well, you get one chance with a pit bull or a rottweiler. That's the issue. But I talked to Tony about it. I could go with the vicious animal and probably go along with that, have a vicious animal ordinance. I think you told me that there are some places that require a veterinarian to look at these and things like this. It's, I haven't finished reading.
It's not in the ordinance, no, it's just a possibly.
And how do you feel about that you're going to have these breeds?
Yeah, ours is identical to what Stafford's is.
Liability, extra liability insurance.
The insurance, most insurance, if you have like that, because I did check, most insurance, if you have owner's insurance or homeowner's insurance, you are covered for dog bites. And then also I spoke with Dr. Burvetta about this and what his opinion was, and he said that insurance companies typically will take care of any problem you have with a dog anyway, because if you have any kind of dog that bites anybody, that insurance company's gonna drop you unless you do something with the dog. And then you will play, help, try and get insurance through another company after you've had an issue like that. So in Dr. Burvetta's opinion, the insurance companies typically take care of everything for you, where they're requiring, get rid of the dog or you don't have insurance anymore.
If a dog bites your household member, you will have to sue your own insurance company to get reimbursement to anybody in your household. So, you know, I think if you, person has had a liability insurance, you have a vicious animal ban. I, I think you could probably get a go with it. As everybody's mentioned, these animals are frequently in drug houses, and there's a reason.
Yeah. All I have that, from an enforcement standpoint, if there is a pit bull type attack, I'm probably not going to prosecute the case under the pit bull part of that ordinance. I'd probably do the vicious animal, because I'm not gonna want to come to the city and ask for two thousand dollars to hire an expert to testify that the animal was the pit bull.
Council's thoughts?
I have a problem with just going with the aggressive animal ordinance on that and just doing away with the breed ordinance.
I'm not opposed of it either. I think that possibly we need to put some stronger stipulations on it though, you know, requiring that the city's aware of it, you know, of the dogs in the town.
They'd have to register it like every other animal.
That's where some of these, like Manhattan has a deal to where it's like that, where you have to register your animal with the city. You have to, it has to be chipped, it has to be neutered or spayed, you can only own one or two, you have to pay a fifty dollar.
There's an extra, there's a fifty dollar registration fee with some cities instead of the typical.
I realize we'd have to register dogs with the city, but since when anybody dealing with drugs ever followed the law?
Right.
I mean, I think it needs to be spelled out that, you know, this is how it is. If you do not have one registered, then we require it to be gone.
Right, and then there's others.
You just don't give them any chance, say, well, do better next time.
Right. Well, and with the registration part, if they didn't follow that, if they didn't provide the homeowner's insurance or, then they couldn't, they wouldn't be eligible to have the animal. They would have to follow said rules to have it, otherwise the city could still tell them, no, you can't have it, it's not properly registered.
Thoughts from the council?
I don't know that I would go with fifteen days in the case of an animal bite. Fifteen seconds, as far as I'm concerned, is about too long.
Well, and the reason the fifteen days was brought up is that's what the judge currently does over Stafford, and she would be the judge for the city. The city here could limit that to a ten-day, if they wanted to. I mean, there's no, that's something the council would have to decide. I mean, I would support the ten-day. I think ten days, you can get rid of your animal, you know, if you had to.
You know, and that's where we'd come in if there was a bite, you know, say we quarantined it in our pound until, until the court.
I think you'd need to go to immediately quarantine if you have a vicious dog.
And under state law.
What do you feel? You've got a rottweiler, what do you feel?
I agree.
Okay.
And under state law, any dog bites can quarantine for ten, four, fifteen days anyway, unless.
Not necessarily. They've had, they're adequately vaccinated and stuff, they don't have to.
They don't come, y'all.
But they have to be adequately vaccinated. If they're not vaccinated for rabies, yes.
I agree that if she was to bite anything, then yes, she should.
There's four breed ban, four breeds in here, the pit bull, the rottweiler, the pressa, canario, and the chow. And then the, you know, and the pit bull, it's got the states of different breeds of the pit bull, the American Staffordshire terriers, the pit bull terrier, the Staffordshire bull terrier of that pit bull breed.
The only issue I have with any of these breeds is that if you are at the biting end of one of them, you don't have two chances because of their size. Chow, pit bulls, Staffordshire terriers, rottweilers, I mean, all dogs bite and all cats scratch. And so, but as long as you have, leave it to the vicious animal ordinance, I can live with it.
That way, there's something in place to take care of it.
Yeah, I think you have to have something set.
And a lot of times the viciousness shows itself before there is a bite.
Yes.
So it could be handled before it came to that.
And since you walk the streets of the mailbag, you might know where they are.
Yes.
They don't walk anywhere.
While we're at it, we still outlaw cheetahs.
And snakes, constrictor snakes.
And baboons and badgers.
Good. Keep it that way.
But we're gonna change it.
Council's thoughts? Do you want John to?
I would like to do something in writing. I'd like to see it on paper.
I'll get some ideas from Bill. It's just a matter of eliminating those.
Counsel's, counsel good with that?
Yes.
Having John and Bill work on?
I'd like to wait for something first, but, you know, kinda like Jim said, you know, he get a hold of you one time, fight rule, you know, you've only got one chance.
Sure.
But same is true for German shepherds, boxers, and those are a lot.
That's true, that's true.
It all depends on, it all depends on the people who are raising the animal, really.
Just this year, non.
But that's something you can't control.
That's true, yeah.
Just this year, I looked at just a little bit ago on German shepherds, there's been eighty-nine attacks of German shepherds this year that were non-law enforcement related attacks. So, I mean, it's, it's any dog.
It's any dog.
Cockers, spaniels are the worst.
Black cockers, spaniels are the worst. I'm glad they're extinct.
John, if you could work with Bill on some paperwork for us to review for the next meeting, that would be perfect. Any other citizens' comments?
I'd probably do it as kind of a list of options, and you guys can just pick from that list.
Perfect.
Sounds great.
Sounds good. No other citizens' comments, moving on. Consent agenda, approval minutes, regular council meeting November sixth and special council meeting November ninth. Appropriation ordinance eleven dash twenty dash eighteen in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars ninety-nine cents. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second on the table, any other discussion?
Jeff on that white star machinery, on the bobcat repair, do we have any warranty or anything?
David and I were talking about that, because we didn't realize we were gonna get billed on that, so he was gonna call Zach, the guy that we bought it from, because we thought we had a three-year maintenance agreement with him, so we may get reimbursed that. Yeah, I thought it was, you know, I thought they were coming out to do some, to do some, I think it's a hundred-and-fifty hour or two-hundred-and-fifty hour, whatever it is on their checkup and that stuff, but when I got that bill, I about had a stroke. So I don't know whether he got them called today. If he didn't, I'll get him on the phone in the morning, we'll get it figured out, because we thought we did.
Oh, so they just called you and told you they're coming out to service?
No, no, the light comes on inside of it and tells you that it's time to service it. That's, it came, the light came up from the machine, and we thought it was just a, you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty hour, whatever it was, a checkup, this stuff had to be tightened and, you know, like the tracks and that stuff, they have to be adjusted and that, but when I got that bill, I about had a stroke.
So you know what they really did, they tightened the track, I mean?
Yeah, they got a list of all the stuff that they did, yeah. Yeah, they serviced the tracks and changed the oil and did a bunch of other stuff, but we didn't realize that we were gonna get charged for it.
Right.
So, you know, we thought, if that was the case, I can drop the plug on her and change the oil, and we do, but.
That's just it, I mean.
That's what we thought. We thought we had a three-year deal, so we're gonna find out. We're gonna find out, so, yeah.
Why don't we hold up paying that until we find out?
You can, you sure, you can sure do that.
Why don't we just table paying that?
Yeah.
And what is custom service, Inc.?
That was some rock that I got for around that, for around that culvert out there.
Oh, okay, that's rock.
Yeah, I'm with you. It just, it kinda floored me when I saw it, but I thought, well.
How old is that machine?
Two years this month or two years next month, is that right? We bought it November, December.
I would hold paying until we find out.
Yeah, that's fine, if you want to hold it off, that's fine, and we'll get to the bottom of it. Yeah, because we were pretty sure we had an agreement on it, but it didn't show up that way, so, sure.
Till we hold the eight seventy-eight for that bill?
Yeah, amend the motion to hold the, what is it? Eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and what?
Twenty-eight cents.
Twenty-eight cents.
Motion on the table?
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries five oh. Department head committee reports, we're gonna jump to Jeff because he's on vacation and he needs to get out of here.
Hey, I appreciate that.
Ready, set, Jeff.
Couple of things. First, as you saw in your vouchers, that we put twelve loads of rock on the east half of that street on Fifth. We think it's done a remarkable job compared to what we had to start with. We came in under the ten thousand that the council allowed, but we only got up, really, if you, if you wanted to talk about footage, we probably didn't quite get heavy enough clear to Santa Fe, which is about half of the street, going back to Prairie being dirt. And so, I guess that what I'm asking for is, is if the council would allow me to buy enough to finish that street, so we can at least get up to Prairie and get it all covered and get the mud out of it, get it graded right and put in before winter. I've got the money in street accounts to be able to buy another three hundred ton or three twenty, whatever it was I bought before. But, and if we don't use it all, part of it needs to go on Santa Fe, we've got some big holes there where the trucks pull in and out to service, the rest home that we could sure put some rock on and rip it and get it back down in there, and maybe we can get a base on that road all the way back to asphalt, so.
Thoughts from council?
You're talking to VFW east to the stop sign?
East has, you're going east has all the rock.
Or west.
Going west back to Prairie, yes. Clear to the asphalt.
I think it's a good idea, the road's really bad.
We need to regrade that road, and we're gonna cut a ditch in the north side of it, we've already looked at and talked about it, but the grade, the grade has to tip the other way on the west half of that street, it has to drain to the north side. If it didn't, it'd be draining into Jim's front door, and we don't want to do that, but we, you know, we want to grade it up and cut some ditch in there, at least get it off the road, so.
I mean, we used around three hundred tons already, isn't it, and it cost us?
Three hundred and twenty-four, that's what we got, or basically over that. We put every bit of it on there.
I mean, we're looking at probably another eight thousand.
About ten thousand. It was ninety-six hundred, I think, with the freight is what it was. I've got between, I've got between two street accounts, I've got nineteen thousand less a little bit of concrete that we bought today to put some posts in at the driveway at Hamples and a repair that we had over here on Fifth Street. So there's enough money there, and another one, I've got twelve, so all together, I've got twenty-nine thousand in those without getting into the capital outlay, and there's about sixty-seven thousand in the capital outlay, so there's money there to do it. And when we get to West Street, I probably want to do the same thing, but at least at this point in time, just get Fifth Street repaired and get it done.
Jeff, what's the figure you think?
It'll be, you know, the cost is still the same on the rock, and the freight should be the same, so we ought to be within a few cents of ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six hundred dollars for that twelve loads, so.
So we'll still be able to, after the first of the year, you're gonna start on West Street, Danny, think?
I'd like to, yeah, I want to get this done.
Be enough money left.
It'll roll over, yeah, should be, where we can do that, but we're gonna do some severe, we're gonna do some severe ripping on West Street before we put any rock down in it. And Marshall and I talked about it the other day, we need to do about as much on the south side as we do on the north side, so.
Yeah.
But we've got some drainage issues over there, we're gonna have to attack before we get there, but if you go down West Street, you'll see the stakes and the surveys, we've got them set back now, we got plenty of room to cut the west side on West Street. Cornwells just want an approach to get back into their field, so they've allowed us to do whatever we need to do there, so we should have plenty to do then after the first of year, so.
Council?
Guess I'm okay with.
You probably need to finish out the, finish our street, I guess.
Started the project.
The road looks good right now, and if we continue, we're just gonna have more of the, we're gonna have a much more complete road, and it's gonna be a lot nicer. I don't have a problem with that.
The dirt, the dirt on the west end of that is better than what we've been dealing with, there's not as much clay, so it may not take all of it, but whatever it doesn't take, we'll just stop, we'll use it over there, so.
Do you want to wait and see how it, well, can't wait too long, yes, but see how it turns out on the.
I think from what we've seen in the moisture, that it stayed hard, with the exception of the last couple hundred feet where the trees are, and I think that's always gonna be a problem unless the trees go. And I'll talk to, I'll talk to the people that live there and see if we can get something trimmed back there, where we can get a little more sun on it. You know, this time of year, the sun is so far south, it just, it stays damp, but I mean, during the time that it stayed damp, it's not muddy, and that's, and that's what we were hoping for, so, you know, and if we got a little extra, we can shake a little more out there, and we can keep working at it, but there's just a couple hundred feet there that if we're gonna stay damp, everything else gets in the sun and the wind gets dry, so.
Yeah.
But.
I guess we do it dry.
Don't hear a motion?
So moved.
For the amount?
You said ten thousand.
Believe me, a ten, yeah, a ten will cover.
Moved to allow Jeff to purchase more gravel at ten thousand.
To include freight?
To include freight, excuse me, yes.
To finish Fifth Street?
Yes.
Have a motion on the table?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed carries five oh.
The next thing I have is that we're completely out of thirty-foot poles that we use for streetlights, the short single-phase stuff, we used the last one we had on the rack a couple weeks ago on the streetlight, or a streetlight pole that got hit, and so I made a deal with border states out of Salina. I got two bids, but theirs is the least amount of the two, to buy a split load with the city of Hugaton, so that they could take the rest, and we cut down on the fray, and he priced me twenty-four poles at a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So my other bid was from Stanions, it was a hundred and ninety-six, but like I said, we're completely out of them, so I'd like to spend forty-two, forty-eight plus tax, I think that's what it comes to, to, to buy a partial load of poles.
That's twenty-four poles, Jeff?
Twenty-four poles, yeah. And that'll come out, that'll come out of electric distribution.
Forty-two, forty-eight plus tax?
Forty-two, forty-eight plus tax, yes.
Make a motion to approve Jeff to buy twenty-four poles at forty-two hundred and forty-eight dollars plus tax?
Second. Motion and a second on the table, any other discussion?
You have plans with these, Jeff?
They're just streetlight poles is what they are. The last one got clipped by a semi coming around the corner on our no-truck street, you know, that we can't enforce yet, but I mean, that's, they're too short to use for anything else. I didn't, I've got enough other poles, I don't have any place, I hate to buy ten or fifteen, forty or forty-five foot poles that may sit there, you know? I'd rather wait until we run out of what we've got to replace anything else. These are basically single-phase line poles and streetlight poles is what they are, that's about all we can put on, they're too short for anything else.
How many do you use a year to it?
Streetlight poles, you know, it just depends on the, on the call, what gets tore up, but usually we'll run, we can run a load a year pretty easy, but our line building's kinda shut down with all the street stuff, but we'll get back into it this winter, so we'll go through twenty-five or thirty probably a year.
We have a motion and a second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Were you in?
No.
Carries four one.
The only other thing that I have is that January first, Mel's gonna retire. I would like to put out for applications to try and replace him. Like to have somebody with some mechanical background, but I'd like to have somebody we could teach to do water line work too, so.
Council?
I'm okay with that.
To put out a, okay, would you have to put out an eligibility list to look to replace and bring potential applicants? Everybody okay with that?
I'm good with that.
I know. Put a hat out there, I guess, see what comes back.
Again, good over here, how about over here?
What are the chances of getting Mel to come back?
I think there's a chance for him to come back. He doesn't, he stated that if he did, he wouldn't want to work many hours, but you know, he might work in the shop on equipment. We've had him in the shop for two months, just repairing stuff, and he has to stay by keeper's, by Kansas keeper's law, he has to stay away sixty days, but I was hoping that the council would allow him to come back on a part-time basis, and I could also, if the state will not drop his water license, he still has a class-two water license, so. But that'll depend on, you know, what spring brings, so.
I don't know that you can necessarily afford people, two people, but I think if you, you're going to need to have somebody on hand that can pull on wrenches and do some of those things, so.
Well, during the summer, the part-time guy like that, there's been in the past, we've hired part-time kids and stuff, you know, to mow and that kind of stuff, and that's something he can do. The last few part-time kids, we had tore up more than they fixed.
More than they.
So we just quit hiring them, you know, but the fact still remains that, you know, he's seventy-seven years old, he's, he's wanting, he's wanting to retire, so.
There's that. Have a majority?
Consensus, that's all I've got. If I could leave, that'd be great.
Take care.
Jeff, one more thing, what's the status of the project on Ninth Street? I've had people question.
Oh, the hole, we're hoping to go up and get it finished as we get caught up a little bit, yeah. You know, that was a deal, and I'll explain it to you, that was a deal that we covered up in hurry, we were afraid that we were gonna get froze, we could get it finished, and then we got caught up on that street deal, so it didn't get compacted like it should have. We're about half gun shy to go in there with anything very heavy, there's about nine feet of two-inch plastic laying across the top of that, going north and south towards those alleys, and then there's about six foot going east, so I hope that the moisture we've had is enough to settle that down, or we can kinda take it out, get it compacted, get it covered up. So hopefully, we probably, we won't get it this week, but hopefully next week, if the weather will hold out a little bit, we'll get the top dipped out and get it tamped.
So it's all repaired, it just needs.
It's repaired, yes, and I bought an air tamp to reach down in there, if we can get part of it dug out, we'll tamp it back in, we'll get it covered up, get some rock in it, it'll be done until spring when we put asphalt on it, so.
That air tamp was in the consent.
Yeah, it was, it was on your, it was in your billing. We've been putting off buying one, those are fairly expensive, but we can't afford to leave the holes open. I mean, it just, you know, we gotta get them tamped and get them covered up. It's a pain, it's a pain for the public, it's a pain for us, so.
Right, well, yeah, I was curious.
We're gonna reach in there with the backhoe and take part of it out, see if we can tamp it in, we know exactly where the pipe's at, so see if we can get around underneath it. There's a plastic four-inch main going west, and there's a two-inch main going north and south, but we also have to cut the intersection east of there because it's got a valve that won't shut it off that we need to cut clear out that's on steel. That was the reason that it was all started, and we called the locates in on it, but we just couldn't get to it when the locate was there, because we need to cut it, get it off of the main and eliminate it. The one to the east is where the steel line is, we haven't covered it up at all yet, because get it off of the main and eliminate it, the one to the east is where the steel line is, we haven't covered it up at all yet, 'cause we're trying to get it cut off, but with the street deal, we got guys on vacation and holiday stuff, and you know, it's just, can't get enough guys in the same spot at the same time to get it done, but we're gonna try and get it done first of the week, so.
That'd be good.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Granted Administrator Lisa Cornwell report, anything from Lisa for us, anything for Lisa from council? Police Chief Jim Cuday.
Give the council update on the Charger, it's been two weeks as of when I put the vehicle out of service, since then, the city staff has been able to replace the brakes completely, rotors, and struts. They did that here at the city shop, but that's all they could do for us, took it to Fisher's, they've diagnosed the problem, it was a bad sensor in the steering column, causing a lot of the issues that they feel. They put a new sensor in it this morning, they said the trouble code went away on the dash, the computer cleared it, he said he still needed to align it, obviously, and there's some lower rack and pinion issues with it. He's got those parts ordered, they actually came in today, he was hoping to get to them later today, or maybe tomorrow, trying to get it finished up this week, he said, obviously, if he couldn't get it finished up by tomorrow, it would be sometime next week. So by all intents and purposes, I'm hoping that we can get the car back out on the street by, first part of next week at the latest. As far as the cost, it's basically kind of a wash, you know, by doing it local here, or sending it to Marmaris, the only thing was that Marmaris had done it, they would've got back in a day or two, compared to the two to two and a half weeks it's been down, so.
Sure.
That's the only issue I've had with it, so, and that's really all I've got.
Anything for Jim at this time?
As far as that pickup goes, I think it'd be a good idea, I don't know, do you guys feel to put the, where it can be used for a situation like this, if for some reason we have an accident and the vehicle's gone for a couple weeks, to have it available at least on standby?
You mean on the, on the two thousand?
Yeah, the old.
Yeah.
At least, like, whoever on standby can at least have it.
At the request of Jim from last, last meeting, I've reached out to Tim Berna Russell, he's actually gonna be here tomorrow to put a radio in it and a siren, which still, we did find a light bar upstairs, and that was, as far as we know, it worked, it was cut, the wiring was cut so bad on it, that we had to get a new wiring harness, but he was able to get that for like fifty bucks, and we felt that would fix that light bar, so we're going to take the little light bar that's on that vehicle off, and mount the regular full-size light bar for, for lighting purposes, so it will be, for all intents and purposes, set up, and once we get the Charger back in, basically, what I'm gonna do is take the two thousand over for my day-to-day vehicle, and let the two patrol officers see and see a Charger and the truck for the regular patrol, so. That's the only thing we probably won't be able to do safely in that vehicle, is use it for transport prisoners, just because of the, the incident.
You have to be real friendly with the prisoner.
Yeah.
I think I'm right in the back.
We put a dog kennel in the back.
Yeah, put a dog box in the back there.
Sure, sure.
But that's a good idea.
And like I said, roughly, I'm guessing because of the cost, you know, the biggest cost to outfit that truck was gonna be a different light bar, but we dug and found that one upstairs, as long as that's working and stuff, honestly, I think we could probably get that one outfitted for less than five hundred, is what I'm hoping.
And I took that Chevy back on November first to, to the academy for a training day, and how long did we go on to take a guess for that thing with the four-point-three liter, three-six, anyway?
It'll be good to see it, he's more than what it has been, so.
The only bad thing is with that little light bar, the cord coming off of it, going through the door, you got a lot of windowies.
Should get her in my radio a little bit, something that drowned out, but no, hopefully, if things work out, Tim will be here tomorrow to put the radios in it, worked out a deal with Jeff to actually get a radio from him to put it in there to offset the cost, so, like I said, it should be, I'm hoping less than five hundred dollars to get it completely, completely outfitted, and it'll just be on the road now.
Good.
Look, he's mine, it's got a hundred and twenty-five thousand on it, but so far, I don't think that's gonna be an issue with it, so.
Okay, anything else from council? Jim, would you please introduce your wife to everyone, for some that have not met your wife?
This is my wife, Lisa, she finally decided to move here, so, a little bit ahead of schedule, she, she will start her new employment with American State Bank next Monday, so.
There you go.
She'll be a full-time resident with, with me now, so.
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
The boss, the boss said you're staying.
Yeah.
That's good, okay, thank you.
Most of you know my wife, right?
Well, yeah, we don't need an introduction, okay?
Wow.
That's easy for me, you know?
She, she.
Well, y'all get our man.
Where's Mike's bike at, Mike's at?
Now, what in the world, come on, didn't you know that you're supposed to?
It was white, Mike.
It's white, right? All right, moving on, Fire Chief Michael Sanders.
Okay, I got several things.
Oh, boy.
First off, I came to you guys here a while back and got approval to get our trucks pumped tested, we actually found a company that was cheaper, so it ended up being three hundred and fifty dollars a truck instead of three hundred and sixty-five plus mileage, so the total was only seven hundred and fifty, so we saved probably three hundred dollars on mileage. Second thing is, I need to remove David Heller from the fire department and add Justin Van Dyke.
I'd make a motion to remove David Heller and add Justin Van Dyke, whatever.
Motion and a second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four one.
Okay, third thing, everybody has been fitted for gear, the county has decided to go ahead and purchase all the gear, so we should have gear, I would say, he was thinking first of February.
Okay.
So, little.
Make do.
Time here that we gotta be careful, but we're usually pretty careful, so.
Good.
Do we know why they changed their mind? I didn't have to go in there, they made their, they changed their mind before, I had to show up to the next council, so.
Do you like to elaborate? Okay, fair enough.
They just.
Okay.
Okay, so that's out of there, and also, the guy that was down here sizing us for gear, their company goes out to fire stations, and they buy all their used equipment, or, I wanna say leftover equipment, and so we're, I'm gonna probably pick up a little bit of hose from him, we can buy used hose for dollars instead of, well, a dollar a foot instead of six or eight dollars a foot, so, I'm probably gonna pick up some, some used hose, and he said some of it's brand-new still, so, but I'll, I'll see about that and see what we can get, and also, he has a thermal, thermal camera that he wants fifteen hundred dollars for, and I think it was eighteen, Marshall was there, eighteen thousand dollars, brand-new, and it's still brand-new, it's never been issued, but like, vigor departments will buy six of them, and have a couple of them for spares, they never had to use them, so they're four years old, and the one we have now, the company went out of business, and we can no longer buy batteries for it, so we're down to one battery. So I thought it was a pretty good deal, I did some research on it, I found some more for about exactly the same one for three grand, so, I mean, for fifteen hundred dollars, it's a pretty good deal, and, I mean, it's a tool we utilize every single fire, so.
I would, I would entertain a motion to allow the fire chief spending limit to be set at a thousand dollars for necessary purchases and maintenance, because these are all things that need to be taken care of that he can do, and he's an department head, just like the rest of our people.
Well, I think five hundred dollars, you can't buy a whole lot for five hundred dollars anymore.
Well, and that's the thing, is, I think is.
I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with changing the spending limit to a thousand.
Well, if it's, I figured, I thought it was the same as everybody else's, well, I'd make a motion to make it the same, at a thousand dollars.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries five oh.
But that still don't buy?
That doesn't buy us, I know that, but.
Money would pick up on it.
There's a process, guys, I'm trying to get the, this taken care of first. No, you can't split invoices.
I'd rather not split invoices.
Mike, the, how much hose do you think you're gonna buy?
We kinda all met on Saturday, and ISO requires that we have twelve-hundred foot of LDH with, on each truck, which as of right now, we only have twelve-hundred foot total, which is not a huge problem, but there's some places we would have trouble getting to in our city, like.
Kent Rixson's?
Kent Rixson's house? That would be our only problem of trying to reach the hydrant to his house.
I mean, are you looking, how much was per foot, you were thinking?
Uh, he was supposed to get me prices on, and it just depends on, I mean, he said if it's used, which it's all been, if, if it's used, they've all tested it, and it's not quite like gear, I mean, there, there, there's not really a shelf life, I mean, if it still tests good, it's still good hose, so he said he had some new and some used, and even the, well, it's all used, but some of it's brand-new, that departments buy, and then they never use, and then they have money to spend, so they just spend their money and buy new stuff. So he was gonna get me a breakdown on what, what it was gonna cost per hose, but I know we need, we have, we had one hose blow out here four or five months ago, so we need to get some more, two and a half for sure, and then some, and then some one inch, and he was telling me that was like a dollar a foot, so, we'd buy fifty-foot rolls, and so it'd be fifty dollars a roll versus two hundred and fifty dollars a roll.
Sure.
So, and as long as they tested it and they're comfortable selling it, then, I mean, this guy's been doing business in Stafford County for thirty years, so I don't think he's, he's here to try to pull one over on us.
What kind of PSI are you looking? A lot of that just depends, Jim, on.
Yeah.
What all we have going, but most of our stuff, just typically, just basic firefighting is a hundred and fifty to two hundred, and if. PSI?
Yes.
And if need be, I mean, up to two fifty or three hundred. And you're, that's from the truck? That's from the truck. Pump truck. Yes. Yeah, 'cause there's no pressure really on it to speak of coming to the truck, other than. It's big water tower pressure. Right, right. Yeah, this would be the stuff that we actually. And you all that are using it feel comfortable using that hose?
Well, some of it now is, that we use now, well, I've been on for eighteen years and we've never replaced it, so it's prob, I would say some of it's probably thirty years old, pretty easy, and we, and we, and we test our own hose, I mean, we'll test our own hose, and if it's no good, then.
Get rid of it.
We get rid of it, replace it.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm, he's supposed to get a price sheet to me, and, and that way we can decide what we wanna purchase after that, and I just wanna get that done before the first of the year, I mean, we're getting into our busy season, so make sure we have everything.
On the camera, are you gonna get a final number on that, or do you want that number now? Do you have a final number on the camera that you?
He told us fifteen hundred dollars.
Entertain a motion to spend fifteen hundred dollars for the thermal camera?
Second.
Motion and a second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries five oh. Anything else, Fire Chief?
I believe that's all I have.
Perfect, anything else for the chief? Moving on, City Clerk Jamie Getty.
I gave you all the information for the insurance, substantially lower, so I hope that makes everyone happy.
I'm happy with it.
What was it running last year?
It was about ninety-six thousand dollars a year.
Well, at one point, I think it was up to like a hundred and twenty.
We were paying right at about a hundred and eleven to twelve thousand a year, and then, towards the end of last year, dropped down to about ninety-six thousand, and now we're, what, about fifty-one thousand, fifty-two thousand this year, so. I'm good with leaving insurance alone, not doing anything this time.
All I need is a motion to accept the current agreement and continue at our current.
So we, second.
Okay, motion and a second.
Oh, I am up, I am gonna be updating that, but.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's right. Four one.
So what else do I have for you, Christmas around the square is on Sunday.
You didn't mention your soup supper, by the way, that's bad.
Which.
I know you were gonna cover it.
Fireman's auxiliary.
She's got us covered.
Is gonna join us again on that, so that's all starting at four o'clock down here, the weather looks like it's not gonna be very cooperative, so we have backup locations. Still just throwing a tad bit of a fit with Mother Nature about that, but we'll get there, the vendor market will be in the economic development building where the pharmacy was, Santa will be in here, I'm looking at talking to Mike about having the gift basket raffle over at the soup supper, so people can see that and drop their tickets and what they want, because I don't think you guys are doing a raffle, are you, this year?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
So I'm still, and then we'll have the Christmas reading, I haven't really figured out how I'm gonna manage that, since last year it was just kind of in the square, most of the trees came back, I had a handful of trees that we had to get back that weren't decorated, people didn't have time, but overall, I think that went over.
Looked pretty cool out there.
It, it went over pretty well, other, yeah, it, it's all good, so everything's coming together really good, the, the candy canes in the square, I think, put a nice touch, and the guys, I think we're happy with getting the lights off of the ground, so it was a.
People can see them now, not have a trip hazard, since we own it now.
Yeah. Um, another thing, it got brought up, and I think in the past, it was basically just your salary sucks for you, when salaried employees work on holidays, it doesn't state anything, like, there's nothing special about salaried employees and holiday pay or anything like that, it just says employees will get their holidays, so when our police chief works on a holiday, is he just getting his straight salary time, or am I supposed to be paying time and a half for him working a holiday?
Salaryed, salaried. I mean, the way I look at it, a supervisor in any position, any business is paid twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so.
I really don't wanna do that math, do I?
Which, that's the thing with, with our supervisors, Jamie is in the office, so she doesn't have to be here on a holiday.
Right.
Jeff, he's just on call twenty-four seven anyway, and then, but then we actually, we actually require this employee to work a shift, so, because he's a part of the working rotation, we have to have that coverage. Prior, it used to be a problem when the department head said, no, I've got hourly, we'll put you on it, and then there was this look of, they never work a holiday, and that's a problem.
Right.
Well, it's their department, and I really don't have a problem with it, if they're not getting paid, they're, I mean, they are.
That's up to them.
They wanna, you know, they wanna work half the day, work half the day, but whatever.
I put somebody in charge to run the department.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying, it's like, running the department.
I mean, if they've got, if they've got a, if they've got an employee that doesn't have family things going on on Christmas Day and wants to work it, I'm fine with that.
Right, I just don't want there to be an issue raised at that point, 'cause it was a problem before, and I, you know, so.
I don't have a problem with it, but I just.
Bringing that thought up.
I mean, if you're a supervisor and you're paid a salary, that's just unfortunately part of what goes with it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I need.
Perfect, anything else for Jamie?
No, I wasn't done.
Oh, dear.
Um, the Christmas holiday, do you want to give them, and I think Christmas is Tuesday, do you want to give the employees off Monday?
I think in the past, we gave them, did we even work half a day on Christmas Eve?
Last year, no.
I think it's only been essential services.
I think it's only been essential services. But I was, I don't have a problem giving them Monday off.
You wanna spend, you wanna make them spend their vacation, or do you wanna give them the time?
Just give them Monday off. There's no sense in coming Monday and then being gone Tuesday.
Or just not having a staff.
On Saturday, Sunday.
We're offering services on that day, but everyone's.
Christmas is Tuesday.
We'll still have on call.
We're always going Saturday, Sunday. So, no.
True, but I'm thinking.
Most of us.
If there's an issue, somebody needs someone to take care of. Of course, you have somebody on call, but not in your the office.
Right. It's just like this week, we're off Thursday and Friday. And if, if there's an issue, they call dispatch, and our on-call people get to take care of it. And if it's a huge issue, they call me. Don't just threaten us.
They've got our phone number.
They call.
Personal.
I'd just make a motion to be closed on Monday, the twenty-fourth.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Did you raise your hand?
Opposed. Opposed.
Oh.
You have three two.
Yeah, it counts as a, as a minus, 'cause he abstained. It's a no vote. Three two.
Guess you have to work Monday.
I'm not working.
You, you didn't move?
You can't. Conflict enters. He.
Well, that's a tie.
That's a tie, because he's abstaining.
Yeah, but it's still a no vote.
Abstaining. No.
No, he's abstaining.
You just, you just don't have a.
So, it's two two.
It's two to two.
So, you get to break it.
And you get to break it.
You get to break it.
I've seen that before.
This is good. Merry Christmas. You get the day off.
So, do you want me to ask about the bonus and the Christmas party now, too?
You shouldn't have included that.
Two, two minutes before then.
You got too excited.
Gary's. Three two, one abstains.
With, do I need a note in there with mayor?
Yeah, just.
Mayor breaks the tie. Do you want to visit that or put that off?
Just get it over with.
I don't really care. I was just trying to get it all.
Hmm, that's in, that's in. You reviewed that.
You guys haven't approved that one yet.
Yeah, yeah, it's approved. It just goes into effect. Okay, uh, so what's your?
Do you guys want to deal, do, like, I'm just trying to get ahead of schedule with, like, I think we did what, a hundred dollars Christmas bonus and the Christmas lunch. I'm, I'm not a fan of the Christmas lunch. If we want to do something for Christmas, like, I've been working, I, I mean, we've been trying to work on getting everyone together and joining forces and stuff, but lunch last year just seemed very hey, hurry up and eat and scurry off. Like, I feel like if we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it.
I think you have to have the day off on the twenty-fourth, so. Do you just wanna go somewhere? I'm just kidding. I'm sorry. I couldn't help it.
Eat with, have you talked to any other employees? What, what do they think? Do they wanna have just lunch by themselves?
I'm gonna start making decisions.
So, what are you proposing?
Well, if you guys want to, I'm gonna look at doing something probably in the evening and inviting everyone.
I think it's a good idea. Well, just about every business does something for their employees.
Yeah, we always go somewhere.
I just didn't, I didn't enjoy the lunch. I felt like it was just.
It's rushed. Everybody has to get, you get it.
You have to get back to work.
Thirty minutes, basically.
I just didn't enjoy it. So, if we do do something, I'd like to do in the, in the evening.
Set a date. Make sure it doesn't go over your spending limit and send invitations, Jamie.
One, look around and scheduling for other people that might be doing their suppers. So, it's in your.
That's all I wanted.
But thanks for checking with us. That's nice. You didn't have to, but thanks.
Well, I do that a lot, don't I?
So, I'd entertain a motion to, um, give all of the city employees the hundred dollar Christmas bonus. Entertain that?
So, my second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Gary's four oh. Anything else, Jamie?
Uh, I don't think so.
That counts. Anything else for Jamie?
Nope.
We just take care of that?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, moving on, City Attorney John Beverlin. That's what I like. Anything for John?
Oh, well, I didn't, I guess we have a snow route. Second snow route.
That's the ten fifty-five eighteen?
Yep.
Is that the correct number?
This one that was in the paper.
It is. Thank you for not.
That's the draft notice.
There was some changes. You guys wanted me to add?
To four inches?
Yeah, so it really, the traffic emergency goes into effect if there is a predicted accumulation of at least four inches, and then, you know, if we get half inch of ice, then the mayor or in his absence, the city superintendent declares a traffic emergency, then it goes into effect.
So, do we need to approve this then? I make a motion to approve ordinance number ten fifty-five dash eighteen.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
On that. It just has to go to Exchange right here on Fourth. I think it'd be smart to go down the west one with it. I think a lot of people that live on that end of town, either hit on this one or this one here, on Fourth or Fifth.
Well, I think the purpose is to get as many main points available, and then people have to navigate to those. Even if it's not shortest distance, at least they have a clean street in an emergency situation. I mean, if you guys want it, if you wanna.
I lived on less fifth than we are, just that road there or fifth.
So, depends on what you guys want.
I'm good with how this is.
Motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Gary's five oh. Anything else for John? Okay, moving on to me. Just for the record, uh, city employees were receiving phone calls on their personal phones regarding my current life situation and my personal situation, and, uh, quite frankly, that's no one's business but mine. And I would just like to make it known that I am a qualified elector of Stafford County, City of St. John, and my current street address is two oh one North Broadway. Check with the postal service. If you have any other questions, I would like for you to please call me. My phone number is six two oh five four six three eight one eight, always has been, always will be. Don't jump on the rumor bus. Quit spreading the trash. It's disgusting. I don't appreciate it, and it's not from this board. It's from community members, and it's just absolutely a waste of everyone's time. So, there's my soapbox. You heard it here from the horse's mouth. Let's move on. City of St. John and its residents. Thank you. Anything for the mayor? Moving on to old business. No old business, moving to new business. We've already discussed the employees' bonuses and days off. Water letter.
I think one, Jamie and I visited, we need to, uh, get the address of the governor-elect and get her on board. Those that have answered, Jamie sent them out by email. Those, some of the people that we sent these letters to have replied. The others didn't. I would suggest the letters be sent by regular mail, certified, return receipt requested instead of email, because some people hit the trash box. I know Senator Roberts, when he was taking uh, applications for the academies only, accepted them by regular mail, not by email. So, I would send them by regular mail, certified, return receipt. That way, somebody has to get them in the office and sign for them, and that says you've got them. Uh, I would encourage any of the city employees, anybody that works here, to, if you value your jobs, write some letters to these people about the water issue that's going, because if there's an I Guga put in place, it will drastically affect the economy in Stafford County, which is ground zero, and all of the adjoining counties. This is serious, and I would just encourage, uh, if, if employees need help, wanna write one, that we could have a draft letter that they could sign, and we could send it for them, or however, help them out.
Counsel okay with that? Having the certified?
You okay, Jamie, with it? And you, you said you got some replies, so those people are covered and they, they, they address.
Yeah, I think I got three replies of the, of the ones that I sent via email.
But the governor-elect will be the chief officer over the Division of Water Resources, so she will have some stroke, as will the new secretary of agriculture, so that office will change. So, when we do have new secretary of agriculture, I would definitely cover that person with a certified letter.
Once again, everybody on council's cool?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, very good. Moving on to next, account transfer.
I think last time, we had money that was in the police departments. It belongs in a different fund, and I think that should remove, go back to the fund in which it, and I don't know which fund it is. You know, Jamie, you can tell.
Was the equipment reserve stuff?
Yeah, it should go back to the equipment reserve fund, because it was taken out of that fund in the first place, and was inappropriately.
Well, I did some more research.
Oh, you have more ma, research?
Um. Yeah. Yeah, I found the minutes from when they bought it, and it's still not making sense. So, when I finally found this, I'm gonna have to do some major digging, because it doesn't even make sense in my head now, but.
Can you read as what it was written?
Back on five five of fifteen, it states that they are going to purchase a two thousand fourteen Dodge Charger from Davis Moore Automotive Incorporated using fourteen thousand dollars from Capital Projects Police and lease eight thousand dollars. And I can't say that that's what it looks like, but I just found this today, so.
Just as a note.
But ju, from what I found last time, and we talked about, that didn't seem like what had happened, but.
As well, that's the same meeting. They approved body cameras, just for your.
So, I just found this right before the meeting.
So, did fourteen thousand come out of their capital outlay at that time?
That's what we need to find. That's what we need to find, 'cause that's what, that's as it was instructed by council to be purchased as, so there was an eight thousand dollar lease, and then fourteen thousand was supposed to come out of that capital improvements within the police department's budget, and they're thinking that it was paid out of equipment reserve instead of that. So, that that money should have actually come out of there and did not, in which, I mean, you could, you can say, yeah, we need to take that fourteen thousand and put it back into equipment reserve since it was paid from there, if it was paid from there, but we need to find where it was paid.
I just don't feel that it's right. I mean, for Jeff's equipment reserve, be buying cop cars when it's not how it was supposed to be.
And also with that, if it's a catch-all, then that's a different story as well.
Well, but the capital outlay was supposed to be put in for police department purchases.
Right now. But if it's not been done that way, then their money could have been potentially going into equipment reserve versus their own fund as well. So, there's, you know, okay, we're gonna take this money and put it back there, but the money that was originally supposed to go to the other one didn't, so maybe it cancels each other out. We don't know that. We don't know the numbers.
I guess I'd like to ask some definite research.
Well, see, and that's, I think that it got mixed up, because there's a debit out of their, that account in two thousand and fifteen for eight thousand dollars, and I feel like the lease payments, 'cause when it said eight thousand dollars that was leased.
So, was that?
I don't, I don't know.
When they buy the Dodge pickup?
The pickup, I have no idea. I just found out right tonight at six thirty.
So, if you bought two vehicles in one year or within a year of each other, they didn't have enough money, so that money needs to go back into the general equipment.
The paperwork's just not in that folder anymore, 'cause it's paid off, and, and I just.
I don't know. They bought the truck before I got on the hill.
I just say figure it out. We don't know anyone right now for sure.
Yeah, and if you're finding more things, that gives us an complete picture, so I'd rather wait, get more information, do some more digging on this. I'm fine with waiting. You find, find the information.
I just feel that the money, it, it needs to be, if it was done wrong, we need to make it right.
Right. I mean, it, it, if the money's been misplaced or not paid out correctly, we need the funds to be where they're supposed to be. That's just.
I'll make another comment in here. It's kind of a little bit out of order, but when we're, when we're buying these vehicles, and I think your police vehicles all have this patrol package and et cetera and so on. A small business like this, I think we should buy vehicles that have multiple uses, not a specific use. That buy a pickup that when the police department decides that they don't wanna use it as a police department, it could go to someplace else within the city, or another vehicle that the city has could go to the police department. Instead of buying these single-use vehicles and have them for two or three years, because fifty thousand miles is nothing on a vehicle today. They're, they're.
When it's a police vehicle, I mean, I agree with like the, going from the city truck to a police, but the way the cops drive their vehicle, I would never wanna put police into the utility.
Well, that, that may be, and I, I visited with somebody in law enforcement this week, and he said, really? There's no reason for that chase. That there's other methods that we can use to avoid it, so we don't tear up vehicles. I also asked him, I said, you know, there's cities like Manhattan that use bicycles, and he said, I thought it worked great in the city like St. John. Said, you gotta put light bar on the front? He said, see, Manhattan arrests people off bicycles. They, they write traffic citations off bicycles. Uh, there's a lot of things we can do, and make it multiple-use vehicles. I, if we were spending our own money instead of taxpayers' money, that's what we would do. That's what you would do in your business, Marshall. We would have multiple-use vehicles that could go either that way in the supply chain.
Please bring us the information.
What do they consist of when they make them a police vehicle, like a, you know, they order them from the factory? Maybe you can ask that, Jim, but I mean.
Heavier duty springs, for, for the most part, brakes are heavier duty. Uh, like on the thirteen Charger, um, I, which I was not aware of, they had to be special ordered on the rear brakes. They actually don't make those anymore. Uh, they got them out of Dallas, Texas, for, I mean, I was the closest dealership. Uh, so, the alternators are, are heavier duty, just because, uh, the older style light bars, now with the light bars that we currently use with LEDs and stuff, you, 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 my opinion, you, you really don't need it. Um, and when we were looking at vehicles, I asked Marmee specifically, I said, well, rather than police package, why don't we just buy a, you know, regular pickup truck? Because, I mean, a V-six, or, you know, a hundred and ten miles per hour, that's, that's fast enough in, in the truck, I guarantee you. Uh, they said the only problem with it is the way that the dealerships sell the vehicles. If they label it as police packages, they get a better discount, so they can take a fifty thousand dollar vehicle and sell it to an agency for twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. She said, yeah, you can go right out here and buy a vehicle right off the lot, uh, but you're gonna spend, they're gonna have to sell it to you for forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. So, if you buy the police package, you know, you're, you're gonna save out, ideally, probably thirty-five to forty percent.
Plus, it sounds like they're modified to be safer and hold up a little bit better.
Yeah, th, th, they are a, a little bit, so, I mean, there. Now, back to what you were saying earlier. When, say, if we got a vehicle, and three or four years later, we're like, no, we want a different vehicle. I'd have no problem, you know, just moving it to a, another city department. That's what a lot of the smaller departments do.
Chevy pickup came from the electric department.
Right. You know, and it's just like, even though, once I get it outfitted where it's, you know, lights and sirens, if the city crew needed it, I wouldn't be opposed to letting them do it. Just, I'd ask them not to turn the lights and sirens on, you know? Now, if they're blocking a road with it, absolutely have the sire, have the lights on for their protection, for, you know, our protection, the citizens' protection, stuff like that. So, there, there are ways that you can do the multiple. So, there, there are ways that you can do the multiple use. And I would agree with you. I mean, I hope, I never have another pursuit in my career, but, you know, unfortunately, it's the, you know, we've, we've taken steps here uh, to minimize our, our pursuits here. Uh, I've got one set of stop six right now. I'd like to buy a second step, because my policy's gonna be, if the county kicks up a pursuit, if we can get to the highway fast enough and spike a vehicle and keep it out of our city, I'm gonna keep it out of the city to protect our citizens.
Sure. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Yep.
No other new business. I'd entertain a motion to move to executive session, the first one of five-minute executive session to discuss non-elected personnel in relation to current full-time employee.
So moved.
To include mayor, council, police chief, city attorney. The city clerk. And a second.
What time are we doing? The full-time?
The full-time.
Second.
Motion and a second to reconvene at eight sixteen. All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's five oh. We will reconvene at eight sixteen. Call the meeting back to order at eight sixteen. Counsel?
I'd make a motion to approve Officer Eric Smith to have unpaid time off to have a surgery done, and allow him to keep his position when he is released from the doctor.
Motion. And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's five oh. And I'd entertain a motion to move back into executive session for five minutes of non-elected personnel in respect to hiring a part-time officer to reconvene at eight twenty-three.
So moved.
So, includes all of us, once again. Sorry, you need that. Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's four one. You know what I call, call the meeting back to order at eight twenty-three. Counsel?
I'd make a motion to hire the, uh, David with the sheriff's deputy as a part-time officer for the city of St. John at the rate of sixteen fifty an hour.
Pending.
Pending.
His current employer's blessing.
The sheriff's blessing. And final say on.
And second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's five oh.
You might wanna find out his last name.
I can't pronounce his last name on the record.
Yulenstein.
Yulenstein.
I think it's Yulenstein.
Yep.
No other business. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's five oh. Meeting here at eight twenty-four. Happy Thanksgiving.